Recording in progress.
Oh, here's the paper. Is everyone ready? We're good? All right. All right. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order of the Local Agency Formation Commission of April 10th. Uh, and we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Cosmicke?
Here.
Cosmicke, uh, Commissioner Zenger.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner, um, Sebastian?
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Rodriguez is absent, and so is his alternate. So we have four members.
Great. And we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, we could have that led by Commissioner Sebastian, please.
Pledge of Allegiance. This is the five of the United States of America. As a republic, which stands on mission. To uphold the principle of justice for all.
Um, when we have approved affidavit of posting agenda, can I entertain a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
All's in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Four zero. Uh, public comments is an opportunity for the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, you can come up to the podium. On Zoom, you can press star nine or the raised hand icon. I have no comments.
Thank you very much. That would take us to item 5.1, approval of minutes from the March 13th regular meeting. We have a motion for approval unless we have any questions or comments.
I have no comments.
Motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a first, we have a second?
A second.
First and a second, all is in favor, uh, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Um, oh, we do need to do public comment on that, huh? Because it's on a, sorry about that, business item.
That's good.
So any public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, you can press star nine. Or in chambers, you can come up to the podium. No comments.
Thank you very much. Take us to 5.2, Lafco Financial Reports and Invoices for FY 24, 25 Q3. Um, and do we have, I guess we'll just, uh, do we have a report on that?
Yeah, Jennifer's online.
Great. Jennifer?
Hello, all. Um, yeah, this is a standard quarterly report as requested by the commission. It includes the shadow accounting or bookkeeping for the entirety of the year, as well as invoices from the quarter, um, just for your information. Um, so if you have any discussion or questions, but it's not an action item, or if you have any direction for me as to what you would like to see in future quarterly reports also. That'd be great.
Thank you, Jennifer. Did we have any questions or comments from the commission? No. No. Hearing none. Uh, do we have any public comment?
If you'd like to make-
Richard? Do you have? Richard's coming up.
On Zoom, you can press star nine or the raised hand icon.
Forty-one, forty, South Side Road. I just want to make you aware of, um, that last item on, um, it was when we had, uh, our executive officer was through the county. And when she retired, we had to pay, I believe that was the $10,000 on the budget. And, uh, her husband passed away. And I was just wondering if that would go down? That we have to pay to PERS, I believe.
Um, I-
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I think that's in six, 6.1 proposed budget for fiscal year. Um, I think. Um, but Jennifer, that's line, um, six, four, five point seven zero four of the proposed budget.
Okay, yeah, I'll have to take a look at that. I'm unsure of the impact it will have. Um, because there's certainly, um, several line items in the shadow accounting for payments to CalPERS and health insurance. Um, so I'll take a look into that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Um, so one second. Let's just look at another second item here quick. So can I get a motion to approve, uh, financial reports and invoices for, uh, 24, 25 Q3? Unless we have any further comments?
Make a motion to approve the invoices as stated?
And a second?
Second.
You have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none. Um, so that, uh, would wrap up 5.2. And that would take us to 5.3, discussion regarding possibility of rotating Lafco meeting location. Um, and I know Commissioner Jordan brought this up, so I don't know if you want to kick it off?
Sure. Thank you very much. Um, the reason I brought it up was when we were going through the appointments, uh, one of the applicants, um, Julio Rodriguez, who actually won the seat, uh, applied through a board commission application, making it look like it, this Lafco is a county board. Um, and I wanted to, um, just make everybody aware and that it's, it's not a county. It's not a county board. Um, I, I'm not sure, um, why he was awarded the seat, the seat when, sorry, no offense. Uh, he's not even here. Um, but why, why he, um, was appointed when the application process wasn't followed. Um, and that was my biggest concern, that it was because it was on a, a board commission, uh, application. And just to separate the two.
Great. And did you want to have, did you want to have discussion about whether we want to rotate? Or was it more just ancillary to the-
So I guess it's more ancillary because, um, looking at, uh, um, the discussion on it, it seems like it's a really difficult thing to do. Um, so I'm okay with it not. I just want to make sure that everybody knows that this is not a board commission, that Lafco is a hundred percent a separate entity from the board.
Yes. Um, and I don't know if there's anything, do we have any further comments? Sorry.
Yeah, I had questions.
Go ahead.
Um, it, as I was looking through this and reading through this, a couple of things popped up. You know? Trying to think why it would be, would be difficult to rotate? And are there contracts involved with like Lafco having access to the, to the county space here?
Think that would, Jennifer, I don't know if you can, uh-
Um, we don't have rental contract per se. Um, we pay for clerk time, um, for Vanessa's time, um, to help with agenda posting and, uh, for clerking of the meetings. So, but that's something that could be drawn up as some kind of contract with each of the locations if we wanted to do that on a rotating basis. Um, otherwise, that's the only item that I can think of that would make us beholden to meeting at the county.
I think it's maybe a little bit easier than how I had been imagining it.
Yeah, me too. Sorry.
Like, I was imagining some nightmarish rental contract type thing. But if that's all it is, it might be nice to look into a rotating schedule. However, I mean, certainly not every other meeting because that would confuse the heck out of everybody. But some sort of, some sort of rotating.
Quarterly or some-
Quarterly or, or something like that, just so that we're-
Um, who wants to go next? I, Commissioner Jordan?
And I guess it was under the recommendations where it was direct staff to include consideration of the amendment of the Commissioner's Handbook Administrative Policies at the May meeting. So that, that led me to believe it was a little more daunting. But Jennifer's explanation sounds like it's not.
For sure.
So the amendment of the handbook would require a, um, four fifths vote for amendment. Um, and I know last time when you brought it up, it was for discussion only. So that's why it's not on the agenda for this time. Um, but if you desire to move forward, we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting. It would just require that four fifths vote, um, to amend the location in the handbook.
Commissioner Zenger?
Yeah. Wouldn't, would we be thinking about, I know we said quarterly, I know intergovernmental, I think switches yearly, right? I mean, I think, does that make sense? Or would it be better to switch mid-year quarterly? I don't know if anyone had thoughts if we were to go down that route. Um-
In, in my opinion, I would imagine that it would be very difficult for clerks to do it on a quarterly basis. So on an annual basis. Yeah.
I don't have a preference personally. I'm amenable to whatever. It's not a really a, I think rotating seems like a healthy practice. So however, uh-
The rotation, the rotation itself seems healthy. I'm similar, not-
Yeah.
Married to how we do it or, or, you know, don't have any proclivity to how we do it, but-
Do we want to have Jennifer bring back options like, um-
See that.
Whether it's every meeting, quarterly, annual, just have a discussion and make a decision at the next meeting?
Time for me.
Sure.
Is that, do we, um, do we need to take a vote on that, Jennifer?
Well, does that include, um, amendment of the handbook as well?
I think it would have to, yeah.
On the next meeting agenda?
Sounds like it, you'd have to-
Sounds like it would have to.
Amend the handbook and clarify, uh, within the handbook, where, uh, how the process or how the rotation would play out.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, just a vote would be nice to ensure we can put that on the next meeting agenda.
I guess would somebody like to put that in the form of a motion to give direction to come back in the next meeting to change the handbook and, um-
So moved of what he said.
As, as stated in the discussion, uh, Jennifer, to, uh, the motion would be to, uh, come back with options for the rotation, uh, to change the handbook. Do you have a first and we have a second?
Second.
First and a second, all is in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none. Uh, passes four zero, so we'll have that at the May meeting. Um, and we did, oh, darn it, we didn't, did we do public comment? We didn't. I'm so sorry. I keep botching that. Public comment.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, you, oh, there's nobody. Uh, on Zoom, you can press star nine or the raised hand icon. I have no comments.
Apologize for that. Um, so that would take us to, uh, item 6.1, the, uh, proposed budget for 25, 26. Jennifer?
Yeah, let me share my screen so we can go through, um, each of these items. I have too many things open. Okay. Okay. And I don't want to take too much time for each item, but I do think that because given majority of the commission is new, going through line item by line item is a good idea here. So I'll go through the brief description on what each item entails and what the recommended compared to the current fiscal year budget. Um, for services and supplies, this is, uh, entirely for tech support. Uh, so it includes the maintenance of the website at $500 a month, as well as, um, we're developing independent email addresses from the county, which is a cost of approximately $15 a month. So that would all be included here. So it's recommended that we maintain the same amount allocated this, for the next fiscal year. Uh, membership dues, this is just for CalLafco, and it's, um, projected to go up by three, actually point two percent, uh, in the next fiscal year. So there's just a slight increase recommended for this item. For postage, I'm recommending that it remain the same. We have not used much this fiscal year. Uh, it's related to those, uh, applications that need, um, mailings. So technically, this item would be paid for by application costs generally unless it's a Lafco-initiated item. Uh, but there is, it's a good idea to keep a buffer in there in case we did have something we had to do a large mailing for because those can add up really quickly. Um, services and supplies, office supplies and copies. This is, uh, similar to the, um, postage is that copies are generally only necessary for applications and would be covered by the applicant. But, um, a buffer is recommended. I am recommending a decrease though, given, um, that we didn't come anywhere close to the 1,500 for this fiscal year. Legal notices, this one's a hard one. Um, it can bounce all over the place from year to year, just depending on the number of applications, as well as, uh, you know, Lafco has to notice for any public hearings, including like this current, um, budget public hearing and then the final budget hearing. And then they average about $340 per posting. So it can be quite expensive. Um, so, but I do recommend right now that it stay the same as we're well within, um, for this fiscal year. We have training. This is purely just registration for the conference, um, and registration for a portion of the staff workshop for myself. Uh, it covers, I think, two commissioners and then, um, one quarter of my registration because I serve four Lafcos. I split it evenly, um, for each of the Lafcos. So this year's is in San Diego. Um, I know it's a bit further than some of the others have been. So it may prevent commissioners from attending. Uh, this is one of those things that if there are additional commissioners that would like to go, I do highly recommend it. And there is a buffer in the contingency that's later on to be able to, um, cover any extra. But I do recommend that conference is such a, a great, uh, educational experience, particularly for new commissioners, um, and networking opportunity. So right now I'm recommending 3,000. We were pretty close to it this year. Registration amounts keep going up. Um, they've been upwards of about $800. So we'll see what this next year brings. Uh, lodging, this is just for the hotels at the conference. Meals, typically meals are mostly covered. So this is on travel days and there is one day you have to get a meal on your own. So the amount is nominal. Um, mileage would cover also, not just mileage, but also airfare. Um, and because this year is in San Diego, I'm recommending an increase to 1,500 to cover those two airfares. This one is one for discussion, uh, legal counsel services. This, um, allows us to have Josh. Uh, so it, he's been very good about keeping his, um, uh, his costs down for us, which I think is greatly appreciated. Um, however, there was a question about whether you would like Josh to be in attendance at meetings, which would bring up the cost somewhat. Um, and I bring this up now because it's fully, uh, within the budget. In fact, this budget ultimately is going to be a decrease from the previous year, um, even with an increase in legal counsel services. So if the commission desires, um, this would be where we would budget for it, um, for Josh to attend meetings. Um, if not, then we can bring it back down to what's been, um, budgeted in previous years. Um, so somewhere in the 17,000 to 20,000, I would recommend. Um, did you want to discuss that item or do you want to wait till the end?
Is there a will or do we want to just wait? We can wait till the end and let's, what to the end?
End? Okay. Uh, Lafco Consultant Services, this is for my, um, fees. And right now, um, my contract is up to 133,000 and some change. Um, and then the remaining amount was going to be available for any, um, overages or necessaries for municipal service reviews and sphere of influence updates, et cetera. But that was based on the commission providing approval to make use of those monies. So it's kind of just sitting there. I'm not recommending any change. This was greatly increased a couple of years ago as Lafco was struggling to bring on an executive officer. Um, and it was recommended by the interim at the time that the amount be raised to be a bit more competitive and in line with other Lafcos and the salaries for executive officers. So at that time, it was kind of a significant increase, but there's been no need, um, to make use of all of it, um, to date. So that's why I recommend it remain constant. Uh, services and supplies, security. So this is an anomaly that occurred, um, uh, a year ago, um, is that there was, um, it was necessary to bring in security for a meeting. Um, but then we didn't have a budget line item to pay for the security out of. So this was created, but we have not had to use security at the meetings at all this year. So it says zero. I do recommend maintaining something in this account. Um, maybe it doesn't have to be at least 1,500, but, uh, at least something so that in case this issue arises again, uh, we have that available. So I'm unsure why this item is, um, still in the Lafco, um, budget. It says for public works and for the review of maps and legal descriptions. However, how that occurs is a check is written directly to the county and then the county surveyor checks the maps, et cetera. So the process doesn't really go through the Lafco budget. So I've been slowly recommending drawing down just in case something does come up that I'm unaware of, that we still have this line item available. Um, so right now I'm just recommending bringing it down to 500 and we'll see, um, if anything pops up in this next fiscal year. Then perhaps it could be done away with entirely. If not. Uh, County G I S. Um, Lafco is a member of the County G I S system, our program. The last fiscal year, our amount was the 2635. Um, we have been billed for more than that because it looks like they forgot to bill us in the, a fiscal year 1920. So that had to be attributed here as well. Um, I have not heard if there's an anticipated increase. So I'm just recommending a slight increase of that 2,600, just in case the county comes back that our amount has gone up some. Cost allocation plan. Uh, we are a member of the county overhead for the auditor and administration and related functions. Technically, really right now, all we're being charged for is the auditor bookkeeping, um, process that they provide. In the past, it is also include legal counsel, but because we have independent legal counsel, that's no longer included here. Um, this fiscal year, uh, they told us that we were allocated $28,705. It seems surprisingly high, but apparently it's based on two fiscal years ago when county council was still counsel for Lafco. However, this year, the plan allocates us with a negative amount, negative 9,000 plus. Um, and from my understanding, that means that we'll have a credit on our account in that amount. So we won't owe anything, but it will be used towards future, um, cost plan related expenditures. Uh, the board clerk support, this is for Vanessa's time that she does so phenomenally well at. And I think it seems pretty appropriate based on what we've used to year to date. Um, and then this is the item that was talked about, the retiree medical insurance and CalPERS payments. Um, to date, we've used about half of this recommended amount. You just quite never know how much CalPERS is going to increase. Um, it's required payments. So keeping it consistent at 10,000 seems reasonable. And I will look into, um, if there's any change based on, um, the update that Mr. Ben Court had provided. And then the contingency reserve, um, like I mentioned, uh, this is just for any unanticipated expenditures. Um, it requires a prior commission authorization to make use of. This year, an iPad was purchased for the public member. Um, it could also be used for covering more commissioners to make it to the conference, uh, if you wish. But all in all, uh, it looks like there's a decline, um, of about 3.1% um, from this year's budget. Um, so, um, while budgets are usually going up, this one's actually going down. And that's it. So if you have any questions?
Thank you, Jennifer. I think we'll go to public comments so we make sure we get that done. Uh, any public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, you can press star nine or the raised hand icon. And in chambers, you can come up to the podium.
I got one comment. Um, being that you guys canceled our MSRs. So Jennifer, I thought you said you had about $55,000 in it, uh, when I got out. Now, being that it's dead in the water, you can, I guess, deduct more out of that. Wouldn't you?
Thank you. Further public comment?
No other comments.
Bring it back to the commission who may want to start. Anybody comments, questions? Um, Commissioner Sebastian?
No comments, no questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Zenger?
No.
Um, I had, uh, the question about the county, uh, the council being in person. I don't, um, I don't, when was, I don't remember that coming up. Um, but it seemed like a fairly, you know, significant cost. And I, I'm not sure I see the need for council being here in person. Um, so I'm hoping to have some conversation about why we would need to have, pay all that money for our council to stay here and stay overnight and mileage and all that sort of stuff. That's- That's, that's one of my questions that I had, if anybody wants to. Go ahead, Commissioner Sebastian.
Is there anything in our, in our um, handbook under bylaws or the general law? They can't, can they just be on Zoom?
And maybe I think that's a Jennifer or Josh question, unless Josh has a comment.
I, I can answer that, no, it's completely up to the commission. Um, I, I can continue to appear remotely um, and then attend in person as needed, which has been the historical practice. Or, you know, you can have me come more often in person, it really is up to the commission. There's no um, policy or, or legal rules that, that require one, uh, one result.
Okay.
Seems like it might be advantageous to continue to take care, take advantage of the technology.
Yep, that's where I'm at, I, I don't.
Yeah.
See any, we're, we're paying for something when we don't really have, if there's an issue, maybe we can re- revisit it. Um, if for some reason it seems essential to have council here in person.
If there were a need, yeah, I would suggest bringing him down, but on a day-to-day?
Yeah, I agree, it's a good call.
So um, I guess my recommendation would be to take that out, Jennifer, into whatever additional costs you had for that and if it needed to be covered under contingencies, we could do it that way.
Oh, certainly, yeah, it'll just reduce the budget by um, a few thousand further, so that's fine.
Okay, and then um, the security issue, just clarification, because I wasn't on the commission. Um, we had, I, I mean, we've all been in government meetings that get kind of intense. Um, can you explain that a little further? Because I, you know, even at the county board, we don't have security right now. Um, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm always optimistic that, that we can, you know, despite all the passions, we can keep things under control, was there like a threat or something like that, that?
I think it was because of the content that was going to be at the meeting. It was regarding wastewater and Hollister and there had been some issues at some of the Hollister meetings where decorum was really not kept. So just to be on the safe side, we brought in security that one time.
So it's just to have it as an option if there is some sort of big issue, controversial thing that comes up?
Right, correct.
Okay, sounds good, I just wanted to clarify that. Um, any other questions, comments? Um, could I entertain a motion for approval with uh, my suggestion would be the amendment of taking out the legal counsel additional dollars for in-person?
Can I, friendly amendment to the amendment?
Yeah.
Um, not, not removing all of it just in case, I mean, there's got to be some.
Is, for the in-person?
For in-person, yeah.
But there's a twenty thousand, that's what I was saying, there's a twenty thousand dollar contingency fund where you could use that if there was any, that would fall under contingency.
Understood.
I think, Jennifer? Is that fair, or Josh?
Yes, that's correct, so if need be. So we can bring it down to closer what it has been in the past, somewhere in the seventeen to twenty thousand range. And then if need be, we can cover any extras from contingency.
Unless Josh really wants to stay at the Weeby motel, um.
Oh my good golly.
Kidding, I'm kidding.
Yay, lucky you, Josh.
Um, so yeah, I would just entertain a motion for approval, uh, I think, do we have a first?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A first, we have a second?
Second.
Second?
With the amendments, right?
Amendment, yeah.
The amendments are stated.
As stated, uh, all is in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously. Uh, that takes us to informational reports, executive officer communication, uh, Jennifer?
Um, the first one is just forum seven hundreds, which I believe everyone has filled out here. If not, you would have received a notification of non-filing. Um, so that's about it. And then the last item was the city MSR ad hoc committee had a meeting. We had great discussion about um, the template and outline for the MSRs, that moving forward with MSRs for both cities was a good idea. Um, even though there's some questions about the status of general plans, um, that an MSR would still be a good tool and process to go through at this time. And then um, for San Juan Batista, that it would also include a sphere update component, um, if they are in a position to be able to do that at that time. Um, for Hollister, probably not. Um, and we'll just wait until their um, general plan is finalized to move forward with a sphere update. And then another core part of that process is going to be verifying the boundaries of Hollister. There's some questions about some of the islands, et cetera. So we'll need to do a deep dive into records and make sure that we have um, accurate boundaries for the city. So uh, that's about that, it.
Can I say something?
Of course, yeah, go ahead.
Just uh, on that last point, um, because we talked in our, in our ad hoc about the boundary situation. To clarify, the, the city, what was the situation? The city doesn't have, I think they don't know where the city limits are technically, right? There's like differing maps, is that the story?
Uh, yes, the, well, that, we had mapped all of the islands to my knowledge and then it came back that it wasn't actually all of the islands. Um, a new map was created based on the tax rate areas and I've asked the city to sign off on that map, but they said that there's some areas in question where um, they're not quite sure um, whether the areas are in or out. So we'll have to do some verification processes for some of those areas.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, we have public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, you can come up to the podium. On Zoom, you can press star nine or the raise hand icon. No comments.
That would take us to commissioner announcements and requests for future agenda items. Do we have any announcements or requests for future agenda items? Um, the only one I had, um, just so we can clarify on the, uh, we had the city MSR. Cities MSR, which is moving forward, the wastewater MSR, we um, can't recall if we, I mentioned this at the last meeting, but if we did have Mr. Ben Court, you know, comment. Um, we did have an ad hoc and we are, um, that will be coming back, the wastewater MSR. There was just, there was discussion in the ad hoc about refining it and putting in some clarifying language regarding um, this, in approaching the cities and the county and getting, uh, just getting some sort of language on their perspective on the MSR included in the MSR and that. But Jennifer, if you want to elaborate, you don't have to, but we are moving forward on bringing back a wastewater MSR at some point in the relative near future.
Yes, correct, and I'm working with scheduling presentations at each one of the affected agencies on the MSR like we had discussed.
Appreciate that. Um, any public comment on commissioner announcements?
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, you can press star nine or the raise hand icon. In chambers, you can come up to the podium. No comments.
Commissioner Jordan?
Uh, do we have a date-ish for month, next month?
Jennifer?
For the wastewater MSR?
Good question, um, it could be, um, most likely it would be back in June at this point. Because the way the presentations are going to go, it's going to take me a month to get through those. Um, and I know the city of Hollister one isn't happening until, for a few weeks here. Um, so yeah, probably June.
That's perfect, thank you.
Very much, anything further on that? Hearing none, uh, that would take us to adjournment, thank you very much, everybody, we are adjourned.
Thank you.